Honorable members of RDC. Let's continue our meeting. Mr. Tahai.
Chairman.
Could you do the roll call or colleagues back on?
Yes, Chairman. This is roll call for Resource and Development Committee. Honorable Ricky Nez.
Delegate Rick Nez is present.
Honorable Rick Nez is present. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Key Allen McGee, Jr.
Okay, Key Allen is present.
Honorable Key Allen McGee, Jr. is present. Honorable Herman M. Daniels. Honorable Herman M. Daniels. Honorable Mark A. Freeland. Honorable Mark A. Freeland. Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr.
Present.
Honorable Wilson C. Stewart is present. Honorable Mark A. Freeland is present. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels. Chairman, you have. Honorable Herman M. Daniels present. Chairman, you have five members available, which constitutes a corps. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Tahai, for the roll call. We're on B, Legislation 0159-22. Honorable Chairman Edmund Yasi, are you on the call, sir?
Yeah, I am here, sir.
Okay, thank you. Honorable members of RDC, this legislation goes to RDC, Budget and Finance, Navigati, and the full council. Mr. Tahai, could you read this into the record, sir?
Chair members of the Resource and Development Committee, you have Legislation Summary Sheet for Tracking Number 0159-22. Date, September 13, 2022. Title of the resolution, an act relating to the Resource and Development, Budget and Finance, and Navigat Committee, and to Navajo Nation Council allocating $10,031,897 from the Sisasun Fund for the Mariana Lake Chapter Multipurpose Building Project. Approving the Related Expenditure Plan Pursuant to 12 NNC Section 2501 through Section 2508. Purpose: This resolution, if approved, will allocate $10,031,897 from the Sisasun Fund for the Mariana Lake Chapter Multipurpose Building Project. Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation, which will be read into this record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Edmund Yasi, Tracking Number 0159-22. An act relating to the Resource and Development, Budget and Finance, and Navigat Committees, and to Navajo Nation Council allocating $10,031,897 from the Sisasun Fund for the Mariana Lake Chapter Multipurpose Building Project. Approving the Related Expenditure Plan Pursuant to 12 NNC Section 2501 through Section 2508. Section 1 outlines the authority. Section 2 lists its finding, which includes an Exhibit A and an Exhibit B. In Section 3 is allocating $10,031,897 in Sisasun Fund for the Mariana Lake Chapter Multipurpose Building Project. Approving the Related Expenditure Plan Pursuant to 12 NNC Section 2501 through Section 2508. It references Exhibits A and B. And Section 4 is the effective date. And Section 5 is a savings clause. Attaches Exhibit A, which is the Mariana Lake Chapter New Multipurpose Building Construction. Date, April 11, 2022. Attaches Exhibit B, a resolution from Mariana Lake Chapter, Resolution Number MLC Requesting the Honorable Navajo Nation Council Delegates, Honorable Navajo Nation President Nez, Honorable Navajo Nation Vice President Lizer, and the Navajo Nation Government to fully fund the Mariana Lake Chapter New Multipurpose Building Project in a total amount of $10,031,897. Then you have the first report, Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number 0159-22. Sponsor this legislation is Honorable Edmund Yasi. This legislation was posted on September 16, 2022, at 7:21 PM. The five-day comment period ended September 21, 2022. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comment opposing this legislation, there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of RDC, that is Legislation Number 0159-22, read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahai. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second. Motion. Honorable Freeland, is that you?
Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, motion, second.
Stewart.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. None. Either this legislation goes to Navajo Nation Council for approval? Do you have any comments or questions? All right, here none. We'll go ahead and vote on it. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? Honorable McGee. Honorable Daniels.
Yeah, Honorable Green.
Honorable McGee votes Green. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green, Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker? We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting motion carries on Legislation 0159-22. Thank you, Chairman Yasi.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, biga.
Yeah.
We're on C, Legislation 0161-22. Honorable Vice Chair Raymond Smith, Jr., are you on the call, sir? Press star six to unmute.
Oh, hey. I'm on, I'm on board, Tash, Jay. This is Vice Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Honorable members of RDC, this legislation also goes to full council for approval. Mr. Tahai, could you read this into the record, sir?
Chair members of RDC, you have Legislation Summary Sheet, Tracking Number 0161-22. Date, September 15, 2022. Title of the resolution, an act relating to Resource and Development, Budget and Finance, Navigat Committees, and the Navajo Nation Council allocating $5 million in Sisasun Fund to the Navajo Nation Oil and Gas Company for development and construction of the Sa C Un C Store, approving and adopting the Sa C Un C Store Expenditure Plan Pursuant to 12 NNC Section 2501 through Section 2508. Purpose: If this resolution, if approved, will provide Navajo Oil and Gas Company with $5 million for the planning, design, and construction of the Sa C Un C Store. Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation, which will be read into the record in its entirety. The spot, the primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr., Tracking Number 0161-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development, Budget and Finance, Navigat Committees, and the Navajo Nation Council allocating $5 million in Sisasun Fund to the Navajo Nation Council, Navajo Nation Oil and Gas Company for development and construction of the Sa C Un C Store, approving and adopting the Sa C Un C Store Expenditure Plan Pursuant to 12 NNC Section 2501 through Section 2508. And Section 1 outlines the authority. In Section 2 is the finding, which references an Exhibit A and Exhibit B. In Section 3 is the approval and adoption of the Sisasun Fund and the Sa C Un C Store Expenditure Plan, which references Exhibit A and Exhibit B. And Section 4 is the effective date. Section 5 is a savings clause. Attaches Exhibit A, which is a resolution from the Sisasun Chapter, Resolution Number Attaches Exhibit B, which is the program budget summary by Damon Development Group proposed, proposal forward by the Navajo Oil and Gas Company and Navajo Petroleum, LLC. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number 0161-22, sponsors Honorable Raymond Smith, Jr. This legislation was posted on September 16, 2022, at 7:32 PM. The five-day comment period ended September 21, 2022. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comments opposing this legislation, nor there was comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of RDC, that is Legislation 0161-22, read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahai. Honorable members of RDC. Let's have a motion and a second.
Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Second by?
Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Chairman Callan.
Okay, Honorable Vice Chair Smith, you have 20 minutes, sir.
I wish you good luck, Tash, Jay. Those RDC members on the Senegi. It's, it's tonight, Vice Chair. I do, I still, brother, um, Mark Freeland, Eastern Agency, they.
I do, Shinala. I'm a Western Agency, Herman Daniels, honorable. I do, uh, hey, that's cool, I just know. We wish you a job, well, forgive me if I didn't recognize all the RDC members, but um, Shinala, I don't know, Senegi, good afternoon. I'm all excited about this, uh, Legislation 0161-22, Shinala, I don't know, say, I don't see, Kela. Um, this legislation that's before RDC this afternoon. Like to greet the, uh, RDC members, the Navajo Nation Council in Senegi, uh, Nishisi. Nala. What I like to do is, uh, present the, uh, I have, I have a, my agent, uh, from Lupton, Sessa Unde, a, uh, President, uh, Yvonne Murphy. I'd like her to introduce herself real quick, and, uh, I think maybe my agents are on board too, Navajo Oil and Gas, uh, hopefully they are on board, we were trying to get ahold of them. Um, could I, uh, call them out and see if they're there? Chair.
Yes, you're welcome to do so. Just identify who your agents are.
I wish you. Okay, let, uh, Chair, I mean, uh, Chair, Manes, thank you for, uh, the guidance on that. Uh, Oil and Gases will be, um, Robert Damon, our Mr. McCabe, William McCabe, Bill. Um, the Sessa Ana Chapter President is Yvonne Murphy, she's on board with us this afternoon. Uh, what I like to do is introduce the, uh, legislation, RDC members. Ana has been advoca, uh, advocately wa, working very hard in getting a C store and the, uh, gateway to the Navajo Nation, the Seating Byway, our Seating Route, Route 12. And it's all right off of I-40 and Route 12, Exit 357. And it's going to be just south of the, uh, Lupton Chapter, 1.8 acres, that's, uh, been set aside for business. Water's available, which will be NTA, it'll be connected through the, uh, NTA system that's red, uh, servicing the, uh, Lupton Chapter, Sessa Ana Chapter. Uh, power line is right there, uh, power line is be serviced by NTA. And the land has been set aside, like I said, for business site, 1.8 acres. It's going to be a 5,000 square foot, uh, convenience store with a, uh, Chevron station, uh, run and operated by the, uh, Navajo Oil and Gas. They did a feasibility study all the way from the state of New Mexico, all the way out to Penta exit. Each of those exits were, uh, done a feasibility study and, uh, we were, uh, we gave, uh, Oil and Gas the green light. Halt was also interested in getting a C store out there and on, uh, Fort Courage, but Fort Courage, we don't have the property. We didn't, uh, have the, uh, means to purchase that, the, uh, uh, that, uh, that land is not ours, so we couldn't, uh, develop on that. It would have been a good site, too. And they did all the studies, all on the exits on I-40, all the way out to Penta. And the most comfortable one was, uh, Lupton Interchange. And that will attract, uh, tourists, and that will provide jobs and opportunities and retails and sales and, you know, provide sales tax for the, uh, certified chapter. The chapter is certified, even in, uh, she, uh, you get that explained, and, uh, there are people that want to see, uh, development there, and we do see that happening. We do need quality gas in that area. The, uh, gas is, uh, something that we, uh, rely on for our vehicles, and that's going to be one thing that, uh, Oil and Gas will be providing. The resolution that was passed by the, uh, chapter was TSA-2022-07-035, back in July 6, 2022. And they gave the, uh, green light to, uh, Navajo Oil and Gas. Navajo Oil and Gas has, uh, provided proposal, and Navajo Oil and Gas is wanting to, uh, utilize funding from the citizen dollars for planning, design, and construction of the C store, right there at the, uh, Sessa Ana, um, Route 12 and I-40. Of course, uh, they'll be responsible and operated by Navajo Oil and Gas after full construction. Exhibit A is just the, uh, resolution that was, uh, passed back in, uh, July 6 of 2022 by the Navajo Nation. Exhibit B is, uh, Damon Development Group. Uh, it was, uh, dated 7, July 1 of this year, 2022. And the study provided for a gas station at the junction of I-40, Exit 357, on Route 12. And like I said, the utilities are there, and water's there, and, uh, the new store will, will be, it'll be a brand new store, which is a big plus, and it'll provide employment for the people that are within the community, and the community is looking forward to, uh, uh, providing that for retail sales and goods and services that will, uh, provide the folks that are out there and the tourists. A with, oh, a, uh, but, yes, and I'm hoping that Navajo Oil and Gas is on, if Navajo Oil and Gas is on, I'd like to turn the floor over to them. Is Albert Day, or Mr., uh, uh, Bill, are you on board?
Uh, yes, Mr. Councilman, this is Bill McCabe, I am on the line.
Great, uh, you may, uh, proceed and give a little insight on what is actually happening and how you're going to, uh, facilitate all this with the, uh, funding that we're requesting. You may have before.
All right, thank you, Mr. Councilman. Mr. Chairman, uh, and, uh, honorable committee members, thank you again for the opportunity to, uh, present our, uh, proposal on the legislation for a new C store at Lupton, uh, exit off of I-40. Uh, as, uh, Councilman Smith, uh, explained, we have looked at a, uh, in, in depth on where to locate a C store along the I-40 corridor. Currently, their Navajo Nation Oil and Gas, or the nation itself, does not have a C store along that I-40 corridor. So we looked at the, from the state line all the way out to, I believe it's Ortega exit, there's eight, eight exits along that, that, uh, 17-mile span. And literally sat and looked at traffic patterns, traffic, uh, flow, and, uh, and then, of course, the availability of the land. When it came down to it, the Lupton exit was by far the, the, uh, dominant choice for the location of the C store. In the feasibility study, we, and this was, this was right, uh, early COVID. So there, this, the amount of traffic that passes on I-40 at that exit, or along that corridor, really, uh, was 22,000 cars a day. And I, if we were to do an updated study, I'm sure that, that volume would be higher now. Again, that was early COVID period, so the traffic was down at that point, relative to what it, what used to be and, and was come, and was most likely coming back to today in terms of volume. So, as part of the feasibility study, they counted the number of cars coming off that road, as well as the cars that would be anticipated to come off that exit, given the fact that there is a high, uh, recognized brand C store, uh, in this case Chevron. Uh, we also, uh, Chairman Smith, uh, I'm sorry, Councilman Smith also mentioned that it'll be a large C store. The, if, if you're familiar with our locations, uh, Winder Rock Chevron, uh, at, at the main intersection down there, uh, it's about 3,000 square feet. Given that this is going to be a interstate C store, we've upgraded the size to a 5,000 square foot C store, and, uh, have done all the studies and, um, uh, looked at all the development plans for that, for that site. The feasibility study, based on the number of cars anticipated, uh, coming off that freeway and frequenting our, the location, the, the, the studies, the numbers show a positive revenue stream from, from year one, and, and will show, uh, a positive revenue stream from that point on. We ran a 10-year, uh, economic, uh, summary on that. Uh, I, I apologize, Mr. Councilman, and, and Mr. Chairman, I'm on the road right now, so I don't have that, those figures right in front of me. But it was a very, uh, promising and lucrative, uh, proposal after the feasibility study was run. We, we've engaged a consultant throughout the years, uh, Lambright Associates. Their, their primary business is C store development, and they've been looking at C stores across the Southwest, primarily in Arizona and, and Phoenix area, uh, as their, as their bread and butter. And so, we looked at, we utilized their expertise on this, uh, proposal, and they, uh, definitely give it the, a thumbs up, uh, on, as, as a great site for, for the location. Typically, a store of this size will, will employ, uh, approximately 12, uh, Navajo employees, uh, most likely from the immediate vicinity in the local, uh, Lupton Chapter area. And, uh, we, if, if you will, we, we looked at this as phase one, I'll just call it that way, because we also looked at adding a truck, truck facility at that location, but the chapter expressed their, uh, did not express any desire to have trucks coming in and out of that location, on top of the fact that that's a fairly tight exit, uh, on and off ramp for trucks. But, uh, if you add the truck facility into that proposal, then the, the numbers jump up by about 30%. The, uh, uh, revenue potential and profit potential jumps up about 30%. So it is, it'd be a great add-on down the road. It is our understanding that Arizona DOT is looking at expanding that and, and re, um, designing that exit, so perhaps in the future, when that occurs, we will again revisit the truck stop facility portion of that C store. Um, I think that's all I can say at this point, that's this, uh, uh, that, that I can provide, information. Obviously, I'll be here for questions if, uh, if any, if the committee or any council or participants on the phone call or have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, it, uh, Bill for, uh, being on board and also providing in-depth information on this, uh, C store. At this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, recognize, uh, Yvonne Murphy, the Chapter President of Sessa Ana, and she's the, uh, one that was helped instrumental in getting this, uh, C store, um, idea out to the people, and the resolution was passed by the people out there. So, uh, Yvonne Murphy, you have the floor. Hit star six, if you're muted, star six.
Mr. Murphy?
Ms. Murphy?
Chairman, I think maybe she's having a little technical difficulties. Try star six, station.
Are you on board? I'm not sure what's going on, Chairman. But if there's questions, I'll go ahead and, and if she does get back on, I'll go ahead and give her the floor if there's anything that she would like to enter. But that's her presentation for legislation zero one six one dash twenty-two. And we're up for questions, Chair.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Smith, as well as Mr. McCabe. And Honorable Kialan Begay Jr., you have the floor.
Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, the question to the Oil and Gas, uh, Ecuador, Mr. McCabe, uh, question is, you know, there's a similar project uh, that's happening over at Blue Gap. I call base of the bunny, and it's a shortfall for the need. I've been asking around before I moved to ask for funding. What's the chance of me adding that funding request to this legislation? I call it a dollar figure, maybe I'll make that amendment at Navi, Navi session based on your recommendation, Mr. McCabe, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Begay, for your question. Honorable Vice Chair Smith, you and your agents may respond.
Okay, those RDC members of the Navajo Nation Council. Of course, when this does move forward to budget finance and eventually, and of course, to the Navajo Nation Council, there is chances of amendments and other things that may, uh, we don't generally have an understanding of what may be forecasted like that. It'd be up to the council, of course, you're always hearing that once this legislation is presented to, the Navajo Nation Council becomes the Navajo Nation Council of Legislation. But I just want to say that I do support, what do they call it, convenience stores and economic development. And I'm just hoping that it just doesn't become like a rider and everybody want to jump on board and utilize this legislation and then it gets vetoed down the road. Um, I just want to make sure that this legislation does go through with the feasibility study and all that that takes place. I appreciate your thought out there in Blue Gap. I've seen Blue Gap and I, I do appreciate your advocacy out in Blue Gap. And I'd like to see a C store out there in Blue Gap and I'd like to see that happen. And I support it. And if you do submit a, a separate legislation, I'm willing to support it. It'll go through B and F. And if, if all due respect, no, it can be put in as an amendment and it'd be up to the committee members to vote on the amendment or to leave it as is when it gets to either budget finance or Navi or council. But we're just trying to save face here and just trying to keep one project as it is and keep a focal point on that. And I'll, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. McCabe on that. I think the question was directly to Oil and Gas. So, Mr. McCabe, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Smith and Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, Councilman Kialan Begay, there, we, there is a project ongoing as we speak with the Blue Gap store. It's a reconstruction. We will actually be building an entirely new store on the existing location, existing, uh, lease site. And that, that is in progress. Uh, that is a generous request on your behalf. Uh, and Oil and Gas would certainly entertain such a request, but I would obviously defer to council and the committee members and, and the process that would engage the amendment of additional funds. But certainly, uh, uh, thank you for that, for that request. As, as, as is noted, that the current amount of money for that project was allocated some years ago to the point now where the cost of the project has gone beyond that allocation. So a supplemental amount would, uh, would benefit that project as well, to clarify. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Councilman, uh, Councilman Begay as well.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McCabe, for that response and bringing it out forward to the RDC members of the Navajo Nation Council. With that, we'll go ahead and turn the floor back over to you, Chair.
Uh, thank you very much for responding, Honorable Kialan Begay Jr. Do you have a follow-up question?
Uh, Chairman, um, uh, again, um, I, I guess, let me just request Oil and Gas in writing of their recommendation because it's the same, uh, the same store. Uh, the pandemic and then all these, uh, high costs of these materials increased the, uh, the project. Dollar figure. Uh, if they choose, if Oil and Gas is saying that, uh, don't do it. I mean, I guess they're saying that to themselves as well, so. But I'm just asking them right now that, I mean, why, 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 why not have to approach on one legislation because it's going to go to the same company? I mean, that, that, that's just my, uh, my ask. But, uh, but like, like I said, uh, 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 I could, I could, I mean, maybe, yeah, I mean, I could do that. Um, just like the, the Doug Smith had indicated that, uh, for, for the chance of getting it passed. I mean, I'm, I don't, I don't, I probably not see it, especially going to the president for approval.
Okay, thank you. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions? I hear none. Honorable Freeland, you have the floor.
Chairman, thank you. This is a comment. Um, Honorable Raymond Smith Jr., auto, um, Naval Oil and Gas, Mr. McCabe. Um, just, um, thinking of the potential site and location, I think it'd be a good move on the nation's part to invest in that area and catch some of that traffic off of I forty. Um, strategically, you know, um, we do need a site on Navajo. And you, I think of the, the, um, sites right at the state line. And I don't know, I don't think that's Navajo-owned, but, um, we need to have, um, some, some competition given to that site because it's, uh, um, you know, it's a market that's, that's obtainable for both, um, small and large traffic. So I definitely appreciate this, uh, Honorable Smith and Tessa Ana, um, the officials, leadership, um, all those who are involved in the planning of this, um, C store. Um, I only wish everyone the best on this endeavor. And I hope that we're able to really give that, uh, truck stop a competition of sort um, and really take some of their, hopefully take some of the, the potential revenue that they gain, um, from that site at the state line. So, Chairman, just a comment, thank you.
Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, you have the floor.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, RDC members. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, honorable Raymond Smith, delegate Raymond Smith. I don't know your agent, Navajo Nation Oil and Gas Company. Yeah, I don't know, Mr. McCabe. I don't know, I don't know. I read that Tessa Ana, you, you, I need that. A good, a good place to build something like that. I read that you travel through the interstate. These stop tournaments that, that, that's done that. Maverick, they're, they're doing good. I see how things go. It's basically, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, other, other, other truck stops. So, so, I don't know, I read that people, when they travel, when they travel, what they look for is restrooms. Plain restrooms. I don't know, they're, they're, you go in the restroom on their way out, usually they grab something. I don't know, we really need to compete with the, or, I don't know. I was an honest guy, yes, gee. But I read that on the Navajo Nation, I see, I see them, uh, looking at the, the stores. I don't know, looking at the gas station. I see that they're busy, I read that, either the, or was it Giant or, or Shell? There's one in Kienta. If you look at, when you, when you, when you get to the intersection at Kienta, Chevron will be right across. And just on your left side will be that, um, that, um, Shell, Shell, that's an eight, that's a, that was a giant. Um, I just, when you look across and when you look this way, it's more busy on this side. Um, the reason why people, they stop there is because those, those drinks, those sound drinks. I don't know, that, uh, each of the, sixty-nine cents, you say, but, I don't know, usually they grab a bag of chip or either grab it, so it's more busy on this side. I don't know, going on at the, um, there's a, a Maverick that was built in, um, Gallup again on the east side. I, I got busy, so, so, um, people, they go there, I don't know, I read that, restrooms. I don't know, I read that, these are C stores on the Navajo Nation, they have a, a big restroom. I don't know, the people, they stop there. So, I read that, usually, when I, when I go to these, when I stop at these convenience stores, gas stations, I read that, I, I look at the, the facility, I look at the store. I call, I call, I read that, in, in Flagstaff, there's a Maverick store. It was busy, they were busy. But when they rebuilt there, was a circle, circle K right across the street, right across. When they rebuilt that, it's more busy on that side. How, how, how they rebuilt it, I see that, they're, they're busy on that side. So, I think, um, oil, oil and gas, yeah, we really need to, um, build along these, um, interstate. I don't know, I read that, I fully support this, um, legislation. And other areas on there, that the interstate, along the interstate, all the way to Flagstaff. I don't know, these tourist areas, I read that, I read that. Highway one sixty, it starts from Mexican Hat, Utah, uh, they go to Kienta, one sixty, one sixty K, one sixty, I don't, ninety-eight, eighty-nine, that's a tourist road. So, I, I see, we may really need to look at these, some of the areas, the prime area. I call, I read that, Manamal Valley, I see that's a very busy place. But, right there at the intersection, that's a very prime area to build something like that. So, I read that, Manamal Valley. So, I don't know, I, 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 at the same time, I think about these remote areas. Um, I read, um, Navajo Mountain, the people, they, 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 they're, they're way out there. Um, and here, I'm, I'm, we're next to the, the Lake Powell over there. I don't know, people, um, to get gas, to get fuel, to get groceries. Yeah, they go to a beacon or crossroad, which is about an hour drive. And they go back, so we really need to, um, um, focus on some of these areas. Like Navajo Mountain, I don't know, I read that, Blue Gap. I don't know, many, many TNR, I don't know, propane. I don't know, people, they, TNR, I think, they have a gas station, they have a food store, they have, they have the grocery store, people, they go there. So, I don't know, I read that, a comment, good, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Honorable Daniels, if not, let me give some time back over to Honorable Vice Chair Raymond Smith Jr.
Thank you for those positive comments and the thoughts of what the Navajo Nation can benefit from and how we can move forward and looking at the aspects of other businesses out there and knowing what tourists need, knowing what we can do to improve on our, uh, service to, um, provide better facilities and clean restrooms and convenience stores and good gas and retail and sales and, and also jobs. Can't forget jobs on behalf of the folks that are looking for jobs in the local area. And they'd be brought in the area where they can walk to work or, uh, drive to work or, you know, that'd just be something very convenient and they're looking forward to that. So these comments that are set forth are really positive. And I hear other stores out there and other things that are happening, like TNR and how they, how they thought about it and how they developed it. And I, Bill has been really thinking about that, Mr. McCabe. He's been really thinking, how do we track our, uh, folks? That's why they're thinking about a five thousand square foot. Yeah, well, it's gonna be a, a good size. And, and then later on, maybe think about putting a truck stop there if it's feasible once they do improve the bridge under the I forty. At this point in time, Chair, I'd like to turn, give the floor a, a brief moment to the chapter president. I think the chapter president is now available to speak a little bit on this. Thank you.
Ms. Yvonne Murphy, you have the floor.
Okay, honos RDC members, um, honorable delegates of the RDC committee. and will be going before the whole Navajo Nation Council for consideration and approval in hopes of approval from our chapter. Speaking on behalf of my chapter, we have been working diligently on this project to develop a C store, one of a kind as the, as part of the one of entryways, gateways into the Navajo Nation. We would like to see economic development occur within our Cessna chapter and for the Navajo Nation. We would like to see employment for our community members and those that are within the area. You know, jobs are really hard to come by these days and, and good gas is hard to come by. And we, I agree with Honorable Delegate Freeland when he said that giving the truck stop a run for its money. Yes, we've had that truck stop there for many years and all the. Okay, that's it. Through the years, you know, collecting fuel, money, fuel tax, food, you know, providing food through the restaurant, the goods that they serve, that they sell there. And it's, it's high time that we, as a chapter, start to give competition to these non-Navajo competitors. In light of that, our community has recently updated the resolution that is attached as an exhibit to the current legislation there, supporting the legislation requesting for funding for this C store development. It is shovel ready. This project is shovel ready. All we are waiting on is the funds. The community is really looking forward to developing this C store and it would greatly benefit not only my community at Cessna chapter, but the Navajo Nation as a whole, because it is one of the gateways into the Navajo Nation. And we are looking to attract motorists off of the Interstate forty. All of us. I'm the. I don't. You know, we have an exit down near my place, near our place there. And you have people pulling off of there, you know, and sometimes they're just looking for someplace to get gas, water, you know, something to eat. And they'll, you know, and I'm driving by, you know, they'll, sometimes they'll ask me, you know, where, where's the nearest gas station if they're coming east? Where's the nearest gas station? Where can we get something to eat? We've been traveling, we've been on the road for quite some time. We don't know how far it is to the next gas station and so forth. So having that, you know, knowledge, since living along the I forty corridor all my life, you know, there is a huge potential for, for revenue from the C store. And I don't know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Where's the nearest gas station? Where can we get something to eat? We've been traveling, we've been on the road for quite some time. We don't know how far it is to the next gas station and so forth. So having that, you know, knowledge, since living along the I forty corridor all my life, you know, there is a huge potential for, for revenue from the C store. And I don't know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Support this legislation for our chapter. And we also will keep other chapters that are in, in hopes of pursuing the same type of dream. I'm sorry. 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 That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any other comments or questions? Then Honorable Vice Chair Smith, let me go back to you first.
Thank you, Chair. And RDC members of Navajo Nation. That is our presentation and that's where we are at with this C store. And like it was said by the president of Cessna chapter, it is shovel ready. And we are looking forward to Navajo oil and gas, design, engineering, construction, and jobs and moving forward. And it's a positive and we're thankful that we are in front of RDC at this point in time. Requesting for assistance dollars to utilize and it won't be misspent. And like Mr. McCabe had said earlier, it will be making a profit right off the bat because it is I forty. And I forty is a continuous flow of traffic every day. We see it going through. If we just took a dollar from each vehicle every day, imagine how much we would have each day just by collecting a dollar from each vehicle heading east, west, north, south of I forty and we would be benefiting from that. So plus the tax dollars of the Navajo oil and gas would be going to the, our own coffers rather than it going down to the state. I know that the Speedies and just east of us from I four, from the chapter, they, I guess, probably do give a little bit of money. But down in Sanders, they, it goes all the way down to the state of Arizona. And that was the one thing that we are looking forward to. Thank you. I appreciate the time and I'll turn the floor back over to you, Chair.
Honorable Vice Chair Smith, Honorable members of RDC, if you don't have any other comments or questions, we can go ahead and vote on this legislation. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chairman and committee members and colleagues. I know our staff, O L C. Though I don't. It's not. I get. I'm asking. At eh, nah, nah. I don't care. Sponsor the legislation. It's the honorable Raymond Smith. I don't yourself and your agents. Do you have to? Though she. Where? I'm sorry. I'm not. I did. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm not. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. I'm not. I'm not. I'm sorry. 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 I don't know. I'm sorry. I'm not. Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know. I'm sorry. 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 The discussion going into it sounds very encouraging when our Navajo communities, Navajo leaders have vision and are willing to act on that vision. So what I'm sorry. I, I, I don't know. I don't. I don't. I don't. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I'm sorry. I don't. What is important to Navajo Nation from some of us, from our standpoint, as leaders or community members or just Navajo citizens, is the I forty corridor. I, I. I'm sorry. 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 I don't know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't know. I'm sorry. 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 In support of this legislation, Mr. Chair and committee members, and the I forty corridor is, is the opportunity for Navajo. I believe that's probably the next venture, the next stream of revenue that we are seeing each day and it's been there for years. It's time to focus on capturing some of the economic activity, economic resources that are within that, that I can just call it a trade route. So you, you. I'm sorry. 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 So there are a number of exits from the Arizona-New Mexico state line on I forty all the way down to my region, Flagstaff. But that goes, those exits, some of them are empty and some of them, they need to be developed by whomever has the resources. I'm sorry. But I'm sorry. 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 Back to you, Chairman. Thank you for this time.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, I don't. That's a. I'm sorry. Your support of this project. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't. I'm sorry. 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 Honorable Vice Chair Walker, do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Bigay.
Chairman Kialwitz, green.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries. I'm sorry. Honorable Vice Chair Smith.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. God bless you all.
Okay. Now, D, legislation zero one sixty six dash twenty two. Honorable Chairman Daniel So, are you on the call, sir? On twice. On three times. Honorable Chairman Daniel. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Three times. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I'm sorry. Thank you for being on the call, Mr.
Star six to this chair.
Don't. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Mr. Tahie, could you read this legislation into the record, sir?
Chair members of RDC have legislation summary sheet tracking number zero one six six dash two two. Day September sixteen, two thousand twenty two. Title of the resolution, proposed standing committee resolution and action relating to Resource and Development Committee and the Navigate Committee supporting United States Congressional Bill H R eight one zero nine, title Tribal Burial Tribal Cultural Area Protection Act. Purpose. The purpose of this legislation is support H R eight one zero nine, titled Tribal Cultural Areas Protection Act. Supporting H R eight one zero nine assist the Navajo Nation in protecting and preserving the San Francisco Peaks because the San Francisco Peaks is one of the Navajo Nation's sacred mountain. Those quotas lead medicine of several tribes collect herbs for healing ceremonies. This legislation would authorize the Speaker of the Navajo Nation Council, President of the Navajo Nation and their delegates to advocate the Navajo Nation's support for the Tribal Cultural Area Protection Act. Navigate Committee has final authority over this legislation, which will be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Daniel E. So. This is tracking number zero one six six dash two two and action relating to Resource and Development Committee and Navigate Committee supporting the United States Congressional Bill H R eight one zero nine, title Tribal Cultural Areas Protection Act. This legislation references as Exhibit A and has a therefore regarding Exhibit A, which is H R eight one zero nine, titled Tribal Cultural Area Protection Act. Attaches Exhibit A, which is the hundred and seventeenth Congress, second session, H R eight one zero nine. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number zero one six six dash two two. Sponsor is Honorable Daniel E. So. This legislation was posted on September twenty to two thousand twenty two at five oh four P M. The five day comment period ended September twenty fifth of two thousand and twenty two. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comments opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of RDC, that is legislation number zero one six six dash two two, read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second. Chairman, that motion? Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Second by.
Yeah.
Honorable Bigay. I'm sorry. None. Either Navajo yet has final authority. I don't know. I just get any comments or questions. On twice. On three times. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Uh, Chairman Kellwitz, green.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart?
Green, Chairman.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries on legislation zero one six-six dash twenty-two. Thank you, shunah, Chairman Daniel So.
Yeah, last, shunah, I, members of the Resource and Development Committee, thank you for your endorsement. I appreciate the support. Um, there'll be assisted legislation coming next week also. Um, eh, it's called Tribal Parity Act. They are sister legislations initially sponsored by Chairman Raul Grillhauer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, E, legislation zero one six-seven dash twenty-two. Honorable Chairman Jamie Heneo, are you on the call? Press star six to unmute. Herman Heneo, going twice. Chairman Heneo, going three times. We'll go next to F, legislation zero one six-nine dash twenty-two. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, could you facilitate the meeting at this time, sir?
I was she.
For this and the next legislation, thank you.
Okay, I was she, uh, shunah, uh, Chairman. Now, do she, eh, legislation zero one six-nine dash twenty-two, eh, she, we'll have a reading of that. Um, I could tie, you read the document into the record.
Vice Chair Walker, members of RDC have legislation summary sheet tracking number zero one six-nine dash two-two. Day September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Title, the resolution proposed standing committee resolution and action relating to Resource and Development Committee approving the delegation of authority to Department Manager of the Navajo Nation Land Department to grant right-of-ways on Navajo Nation trust land and fee lands. Approving the departmental administrative rules and regulations and the terms and conditions for the delegation of authority. Purpose, the purpose of this legislation is for the Resource and Development Committee to approve the delegation of authority to the Department Manager of Navajo Land Department. Division Natural Resources to grant right-of-ways on Navajo Nation trust and fee lands. Approve the departmental administrative rules and regulations for the delegation of authority to the Department Manager of the Navajo Land Department and approve the terms and conditions for the grant of right-of-way. RDC has final authority over this legislation. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Ricky Nez, the tracking number zero one six-nine dash two-two. In action relating to Resource and Development Committee approving the de- delegation of authority to the Department Manager of the Navajo Land Department to grant right-of-ways on Navajo Nation trust land and fee lands. Approving the departmental administrative rules and regulations and terms and conditions for the delegation of authority. Being acted, section one pursuant to two in N C section five hundred. The Resource and Development Committee was established as a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council pursuant to two in N C section five oh one B two A. The Resource and Development Committee grants final approval for all right-of-way. C pursuant to two in N C section five oh one B three. The Resource and Development Committee is authorized to delegate its power to appropriate divisions of the Navajo Nation for the efficiency streamlining of government process processes provided the committee first grant final approval of rules and regulation governing such delegations. Section two findings, the Navajo Nation Council Resource and Development Committee and its predecessors, the Resource Committee have over the years delegated authority to prove land use on Navajo Nation lands to Navajo Nation Land Department's Department Manager. These delegation include the Resource and Development Committee delegating to the Navajo Land Department approval of tribal authro- authorization, authorizing access, T A A. Without B I A approval for independent legal entities wholly owned and operated by the Navajo Nation pursuant to the requirements stated in two-five S F R section one six-nine point four, B three, small little I, three I. R D C J N dash seventeen dash twenty, delegating land withdrawals is another instance when the Resource and Development Committee approve a delegation of authority to the Navajo Nation Land Department. R D C J N dash thirty-three dash fifteen, B. The departmental administrative rules and regulations for the delegation of authority to the Department Manager of the Navajo Land Department to prove right-of-ways for proposed overhead and underground electric, water, sewer, natural gas distribution line, transmission line, substation tracks, fiber optic cables and roads and service lines dropped for Navajo residents on fee and trust lands included. The Navajo Eastern Agency resident is attached as exhibit A. C, the Navajo Nation right-of-way standard terms and conditions for trust land is attached as exhibit B. The Navajo Nation right-of-way standard terms and conditions for fee lands attaches in the C. The Resource Development Committee's delegation of right-of-way authority to the Department Manager of the Navajo Nation Land Department would shorten the amount of time it takes to approve right-of-ways and thereby provide for explicitist development of much-needed infrastructure on the Navajo Nation. Section three, approval of delegation of authority, approval of rules and regulations and approval of terms and conditions. A, the Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council hereby approves the delegation of authority to the Department Manager of the Navajo Land Department Division Natural Resources to grant right-of-way on Navajo Nation trust and fee land. B, the Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council hereby approves the departmental administrative rules and regulations for delegation of authority to the Department Manager of the Navajo Nation Land Department as described as an exhibit A. C, the Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council hereby approves the terms and conditions attached to exhibit B and C. Attaches exhibit A, which is the departmental administrative rules and regulations for the delegation of authority to the Department Manager of the Navajo Nation Land Department to approve right-of-ways for proposed overhead and underground electric, water, sewer, natural gas distribution lines, transmissions line, substation tracks, fiber optic cables and the roads and service line drops for Navajo residents on fee and trust land, including the Eastern Navajo Agency resident. Attaches exhibit B, which is the Navajo Nation right-of-way terms and conditions for trust land. Attaches exhibit C, which is the Navajo Nation right-of-way terms and conditions for for fee lands. Then you have the first report corrected, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for legislation zero one six-nine dash two-two. Sponsor is Honorable Ricky Nez. This legislation was posted on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two at four twenty-one P M. The five-day comment period ended September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. There was one comment supporting this legislation by Lee C. Jim. There was one comment opposing this legislation by Sarah Lee. And there was one comment and recommendation that was posted by the Eastern Agency Land Board District sixteen. Chair members of RDC, that is legislation number zero one six-nine dash two-two, run into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Tahie, for the reading of the legislation. Although, um, members of the, uh, committee in the, uh, step, establishing a motion, that's establish a motion, I'm sorry. Uh, the, uh, uh, she, that's not, shunah, uh, committee members, their motion?
Stewart.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart, this very second. Committee members, this very second.
Chairman Kellwitz.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Begay, offering that second. Ah, do. She, um, not, the kitchen, that's a, but we don't, ah. Long, don't, clash, not, it, clash, you, bah, ah, see, did it? Clashing, again, I, it, it, what, long, do, eh?
Vice Chair, this is, thank. Okay, I was she, before we go to Honorable Daniels, let's go to the sponsor and his, uh, agent. Chairman Nez, you have the floor to present, uh, zero one six-nine dash twenty-two, shunah, you have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. I will recognize my agent as Navajo Land Department's, uh, manager, Mr. Mike Halona. The, could, oh, sorry, but, nah, how did, ah, he, nah, hit, daughter, so, so, see, eh, yeah, huh. Did, uh, could, oh, delegation of authority, huh, nah, oh, hurt, me, huh, so, got, eh, do, zing, ah, do, like, eh. Did, right-of-way, huh, then, eh, gee, eh, lana, eh, say, do, let, then, eh, yeah. I call, eh, did, uh, arpa. Arpa, huh, nigo, hot, ah, eh, lana, eh, see, lean, projects, do, base, oh, ki. Eh, did, eh, I, change, like, on the way, go, ha, ha, pass, ah, do, or, ne, still, be, eh, eh, like, oh. Ah, do, projects, uh, gee, nah, see, kid, mm, they, do, let, then, eh, yeah. I could, did, eh, gee, eh, they, called, uh, never, nah, so, but, kay, ah, but, car, go. It is, uh, granting of right-of-way across the Navajo Nation. I call, do, eh, has, ah, eh, gee, still, uh, I, don't, eh, had, eh, eh, gee. Rules and regulations, eh, gee, best, oh, I could, eh, hot, eh, gee, eh, do, do, you, could, oh. She, huh, so, go, she, bah, huh, do, like, eh, and, eh, do, eh, eh, eastern, eh, or, land board, and, then, eh, gee, District sixteen. Uh, do, kui, eh, sa, hit, eh, sa, hit, let, nah, ah, do, do, eh, in, he, could, eh, nah, that, she, no, baby, nah, so, nah, and, eh, eh, could, eh, gee. So, I, he, that, eh, ah, gee, ah, you, uh, bah, he, eh, go, eh, in, he, could, eh, nah, do, and, he, eh, huh, could, oh, hot, ah, ban, see, case, that, then, that, that, eh, need, shnan, ah, and, then, eh, gee. I call, eh, resolutions, uh, cone, he, ch, uh, for, ah, li, ah, do, amendment, huh, so, go, she, yo, kid, eh, eh, yeah, huh, did, uh. For the duration of arpa projects, eh, yeah, huh, do, let, no, eh, huh, ah, yeah, yeah, that's, eh, and, eh, nah, he, yes, in, huh, so, la, shnan, ah, not, then, eh, gee. Resource and Development Committee. And Honorable Vice Chair Walker, if you would allow me to have, um, uh, Mr. Mike Halona, uh, speak to this issue as well, sir.
Hey, uh, I was she, thank you, uh, Chairman Nez, for your, uh, opening statement there in this presentation. Um, although your agent, eh, she, uh, bah, you, uh, she, get. Halona, you have the floor as an agent?
The question, like, yeah, yeah, pro temp chair, delegate Walker, uh, do. Sponsor, uh, delegate Nez, do, our Resource Development Committee, uh, members, ah, not, so, yeah, eh, yeah, that's, ah. Ah, do, and, did, uh, eh, that's, ah, eh, nah, gee, be, lot, or, eh, yeah. Home site lease, do, land withdrawals, ah, that, eh, gee. Eh, ah, don't, land department, boss, eh, la, do, it's, can, though, ah, do, la, ah, so, then, eh. Ah, do, nah, can, ah, ah, that, oh, T A A's Tribal Access Authorization, that, eh, no. Eh, hot, ah, eh, has, ah, yeah, that, eh, yeah, that, so, he, ah, do, eh, do, eh, could, eh, he, ch, eh, yeah, co, eh, eh, yeah. For Navajo Nation entities. Eh, eh, gee, eh, part, or, let, oh, be, lana, eh, let, oh, it's, can, though, they, what, oh, need, eh, oh, hot, ah, that, eh, yeah. I could, eh, right-of-way, see, eh, yeah, non-Navajo entities, eh, be, ask, clear. They, eastern, do, what, eh, yeah. You have Hamas Electric, Farmington Electric, Continental Divide. Um, you have Sacred Winds, um, you have companies out of Socorro. Uh, eh, hot, ah, eh, ah, just, ah, niche, eh, the con- considered outside companies. I call, eh, eh, gee, eh, um. Can, though, bad, ah, in, though, they, she, what, oh, need. The very first legislation that was done like this for rights of ways, eh, in, to, eh, eh, hot, ah, bah, hot, eh. Ah, ah, yeah, on that, eh, nah, you've never seen a, a right-of-way come through for, for, uh, in, to, eh. Now, it's T A A, so you don't see them either. I call, quite, eh, they, see. Uh, so, this authority is also gonna fit in with the restructuring of the one-six-four process for all the arpa projects under the one-stop shop. Eh, eh, nah, nah, can, so, streamlined, that, eh, nih, yeah. Ah, do, let, it's, can, though, do, quite, eh, that, hey, to, so. Eh, quite, eh, nah, hot, eh, quite, eh, do, huh, that, eh, eh, nah, cha, to, so, do, eh, eh, at, eh, the, uh, legislation. So, the, the, the purpose is, is to move projects through quicker. So, it would go through a full review and all the way to D O J. Then it will come to Land Department for approval, then it goes to B I A who will then grant that right, uh, that right-of-way for that easement, ah, nih, eh. I call, eh, but that, eh, though, again, this is for all outside companies that are gonna do projects on Navajo, whether it's fiber or additional roads, utility, water. Eh, but, but, eh, to, I could, eh, it's, can, though, in, though, like, uh, eh, open, yeah, eh, what, ah, that, eh, yeah. I call, ah, who, so, eh, yes, eh, shan, eh, shla, oh, eh, yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Haloma. Uh, back, back to you, Mr. Vice Chair Walker. I was she. Thank you, uh, Chairman Nez, or your, uh, agent, Mr. Halona, for the presentation of the legislation. Uh, I call, yeah, your presentation? Uh, yes, sir. Okay, I was she. Uh, committee members. Uh, the, she, uh, she, don't, nah, nah, I, how, you, uh, comments and questions? Although, mentioned was, uh, amendments, uh, maybe or could be proposed. None, uh, Mr. Uh, Honorable Daniels, have the floor? Star six, yeah, did it change, eh?
Okay, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. Although, so, I, yeah, it, eh, but, I, I, um, thank you, but, oh, thank you. Ah, do, could, oh, the, uh, shunah, to, ah, no, shen, eh, gee, ah, and, uh, could, oh, ch, Chairman Nez, could, oh. Could, oh, legislation, could, oh, you, that, eh, so, could, oh. Eh, could, oh, eh, bah, ah, nah, so, nah, do your presentation along with your agent, could, oh, bah, nah, so, nah, could, oh. Co, eh, I, see, eh, could, oh, eh, 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 I, 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 eh, nah, then, so, eh, ho. Ah, do, nah, nah, could, oh. Amendment, so, the, ah, so, the, she, eh, eh, that, oh, eh, next, could, oh. Ah, do, nah, nah, could, oh, eastern, eh, yeah, eh, but, but, nah, so, nah, then, eh, 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 she, eh, that, eh, ah, she, nah, so, could, oh. So, could, oh, eh, yeah, that, eh, gee, that, eh, ah, hot, eh, eh, yeah, bah, ah, so, it, eh, could, eh, could, eh, the, the duration of the the arpa, fun, to give, eh, but, eh, who, eh, yeah, gee. Eh, eh, ah, j, ah, that, eh, could, eh, eh, nah, did, ah, so, so, did, eh, eh, bah, ah, so, it, eh, could, eh. I could, eh, could, oh, eh, nah, miss. Could, oh, Resource and Development Committee. Eh, nah, miss, not, oh, nah, that, in, miss, Navajo Land Department, eh, ah, so, that. That, in, miss, eh, gee, to, eh, ah, so, it's, so, bah, me, yeah. But, eh, had, eh, eh, did, eh, I call, go, I'll, ho, he, yeah, eh, even, eh, eh, so, eh, so, that, eh, 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 that, eh. That's, nah, that, but, could, oh, eh, 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 quite, eh, eh, so, eh, eh, could, oh. I call, so, eh, he, nah, miss, eh, could, oh, ah, do, nah, nah, could, oh. Um, could, oh, bah, oh, zee, eh, that, amendment, eh, do, me, start, eh, do, eh, so, that, eh, bah, oh, zee, ho, so.
I think we are kind of working towards forming some kind of consensus on that. Uh, oh, 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 by this case, only um churches, uh, um, mission site lease. That issue. Yeah, the ones are over. So it's easy. Yeah, but when to what the, uh, what the in case, yeah, go. I audition, they, 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 they don't send all. But the hard to, uh, uh, in this case, audition is just a comment, something to think about. I could, uh, uh, committee members. I'm not.
Chairman Kialan.
Honorable Gay, sit there, you have the floor.
Um, you know, I'm not sure. I've seen, but all the, uh, but the heights, a lot of times we make ourselves to say, let's go back again. Uh, so I need to be on the circuit. That though, that a land. But though, uh, now so soon, then again, last day, nilto. I would see a lot of Belanda, ill, it add up, but though, but in the UK. Just only even yellow and did. I mean, there, there, there's a lot of projects that really needs to start, uh, be, uh, to be developed at the community level. Oh, that I did cut or contract, let's own us, and it'll do it, assign it net that do. I mean, you name it, I mean, I thought it all. But in the UK, go, 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 go. I said, but not it, it's those, it's about not it, it's not. When is it that we can be really just a policymaker rather than be a project managers? I believe we have offices for that purpose. I want, uh, but though, but the, that the car. I saw though, but I don't know, no, I should. I let her know he'll talk, go, go, do it, I shouldn't know, don't know how to do it. And it, once in, she, but now go, go. Just a lot of nilly, it, we can always come back and say that, okay. So the big, the like, I said, I know that don't need all that, I know that don't need. To know how to do it, he get it, although. Of course, but now go, go, I mean, why can't we just approve the next two legislation? But yes, it get on, need all you'd. But yet, the night, like, he, yeah, go, go, be, I see.
Right of ways for Navajo Nation trust and fee land. I don't know if maybe Land Department might be able to add to the discussion with respect to public lands twenty-one ninety-eight and how they work with BIA on this. Or even GLAD.
Thank you, Ms. Black Hat. Daheet, Chairman Nezoh, your agent. Public law PL twenty-one dash ninety-eight. Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Let me give some time over to my agent, Mr. Halona.
Okay, Lonana, Jeff, Delegate Walker, and Honorable Delegates, Sponcher, Delegate Nez, and everyone on the line. PL twenty-one ninety-eight lands are those lands that came from BLM. And they were transferred over to BIA for the use of Navajo Indians. Those twenty-one ninety-eight lands are still under the control and management of BIA for the benefit of Navajo Indians, which we have to go to them for approval to use those lands. So on the diotra, it's not like trust lands where they are, where we have complete control and authorization and authority to convey those lands out. We had to go to BIA and tell them that's what we want to do. Leave the twenty-one ninety-eight lands out. It's kind of like trying to put in the allotments.
Thank you, Chairman Nezoh. Should get Mr. Halona for your response to some of the questions, the need for information on the PL twenty-one dash ninety-eight. Then that's back to the question on the duration, limiting the duration of this authority, use of this authority. Committee members, any other questions, comments?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Khan?
Thank you. I wanted to bring you to your attention with regard to a particular termination date. I have seen particular legislation that rather than providing for a termination, a date for termination, providing for a date for the issue to be reexamined by the Resources and Development Committee and termination if the Resources and Development Committee decides on that date to terminate the particular delegation. I could draft the amendment in that manner or to put a specific termination date without any reexamination by the Resources and Development Committee. Mr. Vice Chair, I just need a little bit more direction on that before I send the amendment language. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Committee members.
Chairman.
Non.
Vice Chair.
Thomas.
Freeland.
Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, you have the floor.
Thank you. Our colleague, thank you for this discussion. Hello, Ms. Khan and Ms. Black Hat, thank you for your input as well. And I appreciate that recommendation too, Ms. Khan, to reexamine. And could we utilize both languages possibly? Reexamine with a possible termination or reexamine reviewing a termination or something to that effect? That's just my thought. Thank you.
Honorable Freeland, Ms. Khan?
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair.
Can you draft that for this amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm almost, Vice Chair, I'm almost done with that, with the language.
Okay, certainly appreciate your support and your assistance to the committee here. But while Chairman Nezoh is drafting the language for the amendment, non, it's questions.
Shizaa, Vice Chair.
Yes, Honorable Stewart, you have the floor.
Oh, Shizaa, Chairman Nez, with this request, Chairman, if we just have Shonar, Mr. Halona on there, would it be better to have a secondary as well so that we don't create a bottleneck? Or what is the thought on that one to add in as well? Or how would that work with this particular legislation? That's my question, Shizaa, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Chairman Nez and your agent, you want to respond to that question?
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Let me give some time over to my agent, Mr. Halona, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Mr. Halona?
Thank you, Lonana. Jeff, Delegate Walker, Delegate Nez, all the RDC members. I mean, I guess we could look at alternatives. I guess I should mention is that it takes a while to get projects processed. There's five legal reviews. Like NQA rights of ways, TAA's, land withdrawals, home site leases, telecom leases. Regulations. You don't see all of those coming through. Such as missing site leases and rights of ways for non-Navajo entities, outside companies. How many days does it take once it leaves DOJ? How long does it take to go through OPVP Legislative Council to RDC, back to President Office? Then it goes to BIA. It takes more time. After legal review, just like land withdrawals, all the other ones. Or legal review. We process those, we sign them. Twenty-third Council. Delegate Leonard Associates, Speaker Damon. Rights of ways for Eastern Agency. Legislation. One-stop shop. Projects. Outside rights of ways. It's the old processor. For ARPA funding projects. One-stop shop. Last Friday, I was in Crown Point. All the Freeland chapters were all there. The steps that we take.
Thank you, Chairman Nezoh. Halona, Agent. The legislation that's before us, still on the main motion. You see that Ms. Khan has sent us, emailed us, the language for the amendment. What would be the proposed amendment? Committee members?
Vice Chair.
Okay, Honorable Daniels. You have the floor.
Hello. It's an amendment. Going to make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Daniels. The motion made by Honorable Herman Daniels for Amendment Number One, is there a second? Stewart?
Honorable Wilson Stewart offers the second. Mr. Tahie, you want to read the language into the record here, Amendment Number One. Mr. Tahie?
Vice Chair Walker, members of Resource and Development Committee. This is for Amendment Number One, Legislation zero-one-six-nine dash two-two. The amendment reads as follows. One, page one, line two, insert language as follows. The Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council hereby approves the delegation of authority to the department manager of the Navajo Land Department, Division of Natural Resources, to grant right of ways on Navajo Nation trust and fee lands. The Resource and Development Committee will reexamine the delegation of this authority on or before December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. If the Resource and Development Committee does not make a determination as to whether to terminate the delegation by that date, the delegation will continue. Vice Chair Walker, members of the Resource and Development Committee, that is Amendment Number One read into the record. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie, for the reading of the amendment. Questions, comments on the amendment? Amendment Number One. I'm going to call for the question here. Honorable Ki'alan Bagay, how do you vote?
I guess green. I vote green.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Bagay. Honorable Mark Freeland, how do you vote?
Green.
Okay, thank you for that vote. Honorable Herman Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
Okay, thank you for that vote. Honorable Wilson Stewart. How do you vote?
Green, Shizaa, Vice Chair.
Okay, Honorable Stewart votes green. Honorable Chairman Nez, how do you vote?
Delegate Rick Nez votes green.
Thank you for that vote. We have a vote of five in favor, opposed, there are none, Vice Chair does not vote. Motion carries, we have Amendment Number One. Back to the main motion, the other amendments. Comments and questions?
I have a comment, Shizaa.
Honorable Stewart, you have the floor.
Oh, just for clarity, Shonar, Mr. Halona, this would also show up on that one that I log into with you as well and the staff, right, that PRISM, just to get updates on it and the process of what needs to be done. That was my question, not comment. Shizaa, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart, question to Mr. Halona, Chairman Nez, though your agent. Chairman? Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, Honorable Stewart, for your question. I'll give that to Mr. Halona to respond. Mr. Halona?
Thank you, Chairman Walker, Delegate Nez, and all the RDC members, everybody that's still on the line with us. All projects will be electronically input in the Navajo Nation system. And if you would like access to see all the projects that are moving through and where they're at, have they been uploaded, have they been processed, are they done? You can just contact our office and you'll be able to have those viewing privileges or you can see. So all projects will be in the system, in the one-six-four electronic review. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halona, Chairman Nez. You have any follow-ups? Honorable Stewart?
Vice Chair, no, I don't because I do log in every now and then on that one. Thank you, Shonar.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart, any other questions, comments? Vice Chair? Yes, Honorable Daniels, you have the floor.
Mr. Vice Chair. Legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Your perspective is, somehow I can relate to that. Just a comment real quickly. RDC, where the tell is final authority, after all the work has been done, after the leasing, all that has been processed, application-wise and the clearances, permission, consent. Main motion's on the floor with an amendment, although it's in the hands of RDC. Appreciate the discussion, Chairman Nez and your agent. Just doing work on behalf of the Navajo Nation and the people. Any other comments and questions, Committee members? Main motion to vote on here. And I can call for the question at this time, Committee members. So on the main motion, how do you vote, Honorable Ki'alan Bagay?
Chairman Calvert, green.
Thank you, Honorable Bagay. Honorable Mark Freeland, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you for the vote. Honorable Herman Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
Green, yeah, green vote. Honorable Wilson Stewart, how do you vote?
Green, Shizaa.
Green, a vote of green. Honorable Chairman Nez, how do you vote, sir? Delegate Rick Nez votes green. We have a vote of five in favor, opposed, there are no opposition. Chair, Vice Chair does not vote. Chairman Nez, you have anything to state or comment there?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Let's see, we bypassed Honorable Jamie Hanyo's Legislation zero-one-six-seven dash twenty-two. Committee members? There are no objections? Yes.
Vice Chair? This is Delegate Daniel So. Permission to speak?
Honorable So. Go ahead. Uh, the committee report to legislation. Hundred and ten chapters. Biological clearance, art clearance. It's under a different authority within the same division. All of this rests with the tribal government. Has nothing to do with BIA. Chairman Rick Nez, thank you for bulldogging this down. Honorable members of the Resource and Development.
Was no comments opposing this legislation. There was one common recommendation, a common recommendation was made by Brenda Yasi. Vice Chair Walker, remember RDC, that is legislation number zero one six seven dash two two right into the record. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Tah for the reading of the legislation. Source of our committee. She motioned or second to Nevada or she? Is there a motion? Motion Delegate Rick Nez? Okay.
Second motion, Freeland.
And then second offer by Honorable Freeland. Cheguntah. Uh, any questions, comments on the legislation? There are questions and comments, of course, we extend the courtesy of allowing the sponsor to give a presentation. But then, eh, we have the option of just going to vote. Are there any questions, comments on the legislation? One once. Twice. Three times, I'm gonna call for the question here. Honorable Kialan Begay, how do you vote?
Um, delegate Kialan votes green.
You, Honorable Begay, Honorable Mark Freeland, how do you vote?
I vote green today.
Okay, a vote of green, thank you. Honorable Herman Daniels, how do you vote?
Green.
Thank you for that vote. Honorable Wilson Stewart, how do you vote?
Green, Suzanne.
Pushing, thank you for that vote. Although Honorable Rick Nez, how do you vote? Delegate Rick Nez votes green. Another vote of green. So we have a vote of five in favor. Although opposed, there are none. The Vice Chair doesn't vote. Although the legislation passes, the vote passes. Yeah, legislation. Honorable Jamie Henyo?
Yeah. Okay, national vice chair Walker. So to let us today, I can't. Okay, now I get it in the community. Now I can go home. I've got stuck at the reservation line on the side of the road waiting for my legislation.
I wish you know, yeah, to the Honorable Henyo for sponsoring the legislation that has gone before RDC here today. And then moving on to the, um, back to the legislations. Under a new business here. Uh, legislation zero one seven zero dash twenty-two sponsors, uh, Rick Nez, Honorable Nez. Mr. Tah, you give us a reading of the legislation.
Vice Chair Walker, number of RDC, you have legislative summary sheet tracking number zero one seven zero dash two-two. Day September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Title of the resolution for post standing committee resolution. An action relating to Resource and Development Committee. Approving the plan of operation for the Navajo Nation Division of Natural Resources, General Land Development Department, one-stop shop. Purpose, the Navajo Nation Council through an actment of resolution C J Y dash forty-one dash twenty-one directed the Division of Natural Resources. And General Land Development Department to present a proposed plan of operation for a one-stop shop. To facilitate review of rights-of-way temporary construction permits, mission sites permits to the Resource and Development Committee. The purpose of this legislation is for the Resource and Development Committee to approve the Navajo Nation's one-stop shop plan of operation. For the General Land Development Department within the Navajo Nation Division of Natural Resources. Resource and Development Committee has final authority over this legislation. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Ricky Nez. This is tracking number zero one seven zero dash two-two. In action relating to the Resource and Development Committee approving the plan of operation for Navajo Nation Division of Natural Resources, General Land Development Department. One-stop shop. Being acted, section one, authority. The Resource and Development Committee is established as a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council with oversight committee. For the Division of Natural Resources, two N N C section five hundred A, two N N C section five oh one C one. B, the Resource and Development Committee is empowered to grant final approval of plan of operations for the Division of Natural Resources at two N N C section five oh one B two G. C, the Navajo Nation Council through an actment of resolutions, C J Y dash forty-one dash twenty-one established. The Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund and an expenditure authorization process. Section thirteen B of C J Y dash forty-one dash twenty-one directed Division of Natural Resources and General Land Development Department. To present a proposed plan of operation for a one-stop shop to facilitate review right-of-ways temporary construction permits. Mission site permits to the Resource and Development Committee. Section two findings, the Navajo Nation Division of Natural Resources, the General Land Development Department has submitted plan of operation. For the Navajo Nation one-stop shop attached as exhibit A. B, purpose, the Navajo Nation one-stop shop shall be the regulatory review for the Navajo Nation Federal Recovery Fund. Funded projects, as stated in the Navajo Nation one-stop shop plan of operation. The Navajo Nation one-stop shop will establish an industry team. To review and permit projects at various stages of development order to effectively and efficiently. Approve projects funded through the American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA. The funding approved under ARPA to the Navajo Nation has been directed to the Fiscal. Recovery Fund Office for implementation, consistent with the guidance provided under the U.S. Department of Treasury. The Navajo Nation one-stop shop shall vet and review all executive order review documents with a per. Preference placed on ARPA label projects. Section three, approving the plan of operation for the General Land Developments Department's Navajo Nation's one-stop shop within the Navajo Nation Division of Natural Resources. The Resource and Development Committee hereby approves the Navajo Nation's one-stop shop plan of operation for the General Land Development Department. Within the Navajo Nation Division of Natural Resources attached in exhibit A. Attaches exhibit A, which is the Navajo Nation's one-stop shop regulatory review plan of operation. You have the first report corrected for the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for tracking number zero one seven zero dash two-two. This legislation was posted on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two at four twenty-four P M. The Friday commentary ended September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. There was two comments supporting this legislation, one was by David Randolph Senior, the other one was Willamena Smith. There was no comments opposing this legislation. There was three comments and recommendations for this legislation. The first comments and recommendation was made by Anita Hayes, the second one. By Eastern Agency Land Board District sixteen, and the third one is by Timothy B. Shaifry. Vice Chair Walker members of RDC, that is legislation number zero one seven zero dash two-two right into the record. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Tah for the reading of the legislation. Really appreciate your assistance and support to the committee here today and. And. And what they call and other staff members and O L C. Uh, committee members. Is there a motion to? Pro? Nanta.
Motion, Stewart.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Stewart. Is there a second? Not, uh, is there a second? Vice Chair Walker, can I second Delegate Nez?
I believe so, Chairman.
Okay, if so, I'd like to second. Okay, Mr. Tah. Sponsor can second, yeah. Legislations.
Vice Chair Walker, I believe that is correct, but I would recommend we ask Ms. Khan for that legal guidance, just to make sure. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker.
Okay. Ms. Khan. Sponsor, second. On his or her legislation.
That is. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The, uh, standing, standing committee rules of order allows any delegate to make the second. Mister Chair, that would allow, um, Chairman Nez to second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Khan, for your advisement and guidance to the committee. Honorable Kialan Begay offering the second. So I'm gonna go with that. So we have a motion and a second. Okay, I, I recognize that. Your party to the motion here is the seconding party. As a. Committee members. Any questions, comments? Vice Chair. Yes. Honorable Stewart. Um, so there's a question or comment to be. Um, to follow the presentation from the sponsor and his agent. Chairman Nez, you have the floor to present the, um, legislation.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. I do. The legislation zero one seven zero dash twenty-two. One-stop shop. Regulatory, regulatory review for the Navajo Nation Federal Recovery Fund. Funded projects. Different departments. General Land Development Department, Navajo Nation Environmental Protection Agency. Department of Fish and Wildlife, Navajo Land Department. Navajo Nation Heritage and Historic Preservation Department, Navajo Nation Minerals Department, Navajo Nation Forestry. Although I share you how, um, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, I'd like to give some time over to, uh, GLAD Director. General Land Development Director. Podo, Miss Ette Anderson Abasta. She did provide, her and her staff did an excellent job with, um. The PowerPoint presentation is very short, like about three or four pages. So if you would, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, uh, allow her to present that presentation.
Uh, Hakushin, thank you, uh, Chairman Nez. Although, um, we can. Give some time to, um, Mrs. Anderson Abasta. Hakushin, you had the floor?
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Vice Chair Walker, thank you, Honorable members of RDC Committee. Um, we will be sharing our screen, um, Ms. Patina Vicenti will go ahead and share the presentation. So she's pulling it up on the screen now. I thank you all for your patience and still being on the call this evening. Okay, we have the one-stop shop presentation. And it goes as you see on the screen right now. Okay. Next. Okay, then the one-stop shop. Patina, can you switch to the next one? The one-stop shop is a cloud-based system that allows for streamlining of the one sixty-four process. Also known as the Executive Official Review. It progresses through a three-tier, three-tier system between departments with notifications and reminders. It has security measures that backs up the Navajo Nation files in three different locations. It also allows from any location, as long as you have access to the internet. It creates transparency and also creates a ten-day. Ten-day legislated review process. Next. As you see on this slide here, it shows the, um, one-stop shop electronic review. So it not only involves rights-of-way, but it also involves service line agreements, telecommunications tower leases. General leases, revocable use permits, tribal access authorization, which is also known as T A A, as Mr. Halona. Shared in the, um, previous legis, not previous, but two legislations before. And also projects not requiring new land leases such as administrative name changes in nature. So those are all received at GLAD and. Once we receive it, we do, do our internal reviews and then it goes all at one time inside the portal. To the Minerals Department, the Navajo Nation EPA, where multiple departments are also involved on their end. The Navajo Department of Fish and Wildlife, the Navajo Historic and Heritage Preservation Department. Where our Tipo, um, personnel is located. The Navajo Nation Department of Water Resources and of course, the Division of Natural Resources. So it is a legislated ten-day review period. From there, it goes over to the Navajo Nation Department of Justice. Which, um, they have access as well. And in the end, it's approved by, um, the Navajo Land Department Director and construction can then begin. Um, which, which, um, ultimately is a timeline of thirty to forty business days in total. Um, copy, copies are being all, I'm sorry, copies are then sent to B I A for final archiving. Next. Okay, as you see in this slide, the project packets, so we still have, um, requirements as far as, um. The letter of application from the applicant, the cover letter from the applicant. And we also still need a supporting chapter resolution and, and for all respective chapters. We also require a letter from the grazing officer or consent from the grazing permit holder. So that's the grazing officer official and also a legal survey or GPS coordinates, um, which can also be done by private contractor. The biological resource compliance form or the B R C F that's issued from the Navajo Nation Department of Fish and Wildlife. And the cultural resource compliance form, which is issued from the Navajo Nation Heritage and Historic Preservation Department. Next, please. On this slide, it shows the infrastructure developers on Navajo Nation trust and felands. So one side of the slide shows the tribal access authorization applicable, um. Projects, and then it shows the right-of-way applica, applicable projects, which is also streamlined through the one-stop shop. So the T A A is for all Navajo Nation-owned entities. So the, 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 the list here includes roads. The Navajo Nation Department of Transportation, highways and improvements. Distribution water lines under N T U A. Or Department of Water Resources. Distribution sewer lines, water treatment plants, distribution gas lines, transmission lines. Distribution electric lines, distribution fiber, all those are the, under the. Multi-utility company of N T U A, um, temporary construction easements under Department of Transportation, Navajo Department of Transportation. And of course, Navajo Nation requirements and approvals. So, uh, commercial operations are also assessed as well. So it shows the little, um. Uh. I guess the, the, the companies that are allowed to submit T A A applicable applications to GLAD, so we have, uh, N T U A. N dot I H S N E C A Water Resources. On the right side of the screen, it shows the right-of-way applicable, um, entities or projects that are included under rights-of-way. For non-Navajo Nation entities. So those are roads under federal, state, county, or B I A. Gas lines under Transwestern Kinder Morgan. Uh, transmission lines under A P S, S R P, P N M. Distribution electric lines, which also include HEMAS, uh, CDEC. Or Continental Divide. Distribution fiber lines such as Frontier or Sacred Wind. And also temporary construction easements. And also an environmental assessment or E A is required and the right-of-way is then granted by the B I A. So it just shows the, um. I guess there's symbols, I, sorry, I drew a blank on that word, but that's just showing the companies again. Uh, we can go to the next slide. So the efficient streamlining of major infrastructure. So, um, the previous legislation, which was the delegated authority to the Navajo Land Department Director. As well as the terms and conditions are all applicable under the one-stop shop. So as you see in the center there, Navajo Land Department Managers, Delegated Authorities. So that also, that's all included in there, the rights-of-way for Navajo or non-Navajo entities pending legislation. Um, the Navajo Nation home site leases, which are approved. The service line agreements for home and businesses. Which are also approved. The tribal access authorization approved or T A A. And telecommunications tower leases and co-locations, which are also then approved. Next. So benefits of the one-stop shop. So it allows for the electronic official review, one sixty-four of projects to be routed in days if need be. It's entirely, entirely electronic. It will expedite rights-of-way on eastern Navajo. It will coincide with home site leases and service line expedience. It will establish collective input from all Navajo Nation regulatory review entities. It establishes a quote-unquote shot clock window for reviews to happen or else they move forward automatically. It also establishes a quote-unquote escalation rule such as three, five, or eight business day notifications. And after ten days, the project moves forward. Next. And that is the end of the one-stop shop PowerPoint presentation, and there's our website right there, glad.org. We are, um, updating it basically every week and we are making improvements to our website. And making it more user-friendly and easier to read the documents, flow charts, everything you will find there. Um, thank you, Chair, thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker, we're done. Oh, thank you. Glad, um, staff, department manager, all your staff for putting this together and giving the presentation. Um, although, uh, Chairman Nez, so agents. So, Kadeya, committee members, uh, Honorable Stewart. Got a question or a comment?
Yes. A comment, Suzanne, um, Vice Chair. The comment I have is the same thing, uh, I recommend a, an amendment. From District sixteen in yesterday's meeting. Eighty, a, the recommendation regarding this legislation. Seeing it's for the F R F funded projects. I want to make that amendment known, but, uh, believe we do have the resolution from District. Um, sixteen already that was received.
I wish you, thank you, uh, Honorable Stewart. The amendment that you're proposing. Is that word for word like the, in the previous legislation? One-six-nine. Honorable Stewart.
Uh, Suzanne. The amendment on this one, it says in the. Resource Audit Committee to utilize the. Waivers no longer, well, one of them is, um. Where was it, Shaw? Under two, again. Amending zero one seven zero dash two-two to Resource Audit Committee, Navajo Nation Council to waive the requirements for a home site lease. To existing dwellings before the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen. Um, community assessment determined by the person, by the respective chapter, community assessment. Auto, the number two. Waiving the requirement of a home site lease for disabled Navajo individuals and/or family, single-parent homes and veterans. Auto, the, um, third one. That these two waivers. To be utilized no longer than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. The court of a car, Suzanne, Vice Chair Walker and RDC members.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart, um, Mr. Tah. Although, um. On. You have the, uh, amendment. With you, is that ready for presentation here or reading? Mr. Tah.
Vice Chair Walker, members of RDC. Um, we have the resolution of the Eastern Agency Land Board District sixteen. The drafting of the amendment, um, I'm not sure if Ms. Khan has it ready, but I haven't got, I haven't received an email indicating. That it's ready for, to be read into the record. Back to you, Vice Chair Walker.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tah, Ms. Khan. Are you developing the language for the amendment?
Hi, this is Veronica Blackett, can I speak to the amendment?
Uh, okay. Um, Ms. Khan, are you on the call with us still?
Yes. Yes, Mister Vice Chair, I am on the call and unfortunately, I, I am just now seeing, um. The, um, the request for, um, um, amendments. Um, I do want to, um, say first of all, the purpose of this legislation is approving. The, um, the process for the, for the, um, one-stop-shop reviews. That is a, a particular executive branch process for review. And the. I see that these, the requests to waive various requirements for home site leases to be. Outside of that particular, um. Of the, of the present legislation we are working on. That is before you now, Mister Chair, members of the RDC, I see it as, um. Not, um, within the purpose of the legislation. Um, second, um, these particular waivers that are requested for the home site lease. Um, uh. Require quite a bit more language with regard to waiving any of, any of the requirements for home site leases. Um, and so. I. One, I do not see that the purpose of these amendments. Um, with regard to home site lease waivers are within the purpose of this legislation. Second, a separate legislation with regard to waivers, um. Second, a separate legislation with regard to waivers, um, uh, would, would be the place to, um, put these type of requests for waivers and that would require, um, um, more, like, um, uh, research on my part and then, um, the, anyway, in, in short, the legislation that we are working on is not, um, is for a particular purpose and these homesite lease waivers are outside of the purpose of the legislation for, um, the three requested amendment, uh, requested amendments in this particular request from the Eastern Agency Land Board. Um, with regard to, um, let's see, I see that takes, my quick read of the requested um, amendments, that, that takes care of all those requested amendments. Uh, I don't see them as pertinent to this legislation, which is for a re, particular review process. They would meet separate legislation which would require what, um, things having to do specifically with waivers and eminent domain and, and those sorts of things, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, thank you.
Machine, yeah, sure, sure. Uh, for your, um, information and your, um, guidance here. Yeah. Although, uh, let's go to, uh, DOJ, Ms. Blackhat, you wanted to comment?
Yeah, um, I was, uh, gonna say the same thing that, um, Ms. Khan had pointed out. Um, this particular legislation goes to reviews of documents that would normally go through the executive review process and, um, homesites don't go through the view, review process and those are done administratively through Land Department. So if, I mean, they are requesting waivers of the homesite lease requirements, then that would require separately legislation, um, specific to homesite leases. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackhat, for your, um, input and information as well. Yeah. Uh, Honorable Stewart.
Honorable Mark Freeland, how do you vote? I dropped off the call. The machine, we have a vote of four in favor. Opposing, there are none. Vice Chair does not vote here. On what the president, reside, you don't vote, so I'm not voting today. Or with these legislations. So five in favor, none opposed, motion carries. Chairman, you have anything to say here?
I just want to say thank you very much. And I did a lot of thinking. It all could also be on the story. General Development Department. I do, I just manager and long been on this. Yes, and I see that you're not. And that's the, Ms. Ellina Yasi, just would like to recognize that she was really a part of this as well as glad stuff. And also Mr. Halona's shop. So thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman. So at the local, she had a, an it's another day. And he thought, no, no, she did, I did, I did. Yeah. I probably think that, yeah. Chairman, I'm give you back to Gavel, the virtual Gavel. And you can, uh, help us finish the meeting here, the agenda. Okay, Chairman, back to you.
Okay, and so honorable Vice Chair Walker, what are meeting? Be what's called, or it's hit over. She was in Chicago, none of the work here. Today, yeah, huh? We're still on new business action. After this, we have a report by BIA NDOT Apache Navajo County on roads that are washed out. Um, a report in Arizona, Utah, New Mexico, she know less, but on H, Quaggy. Approving a leadership meeting with USDA NRCS Office of the State Conservationist on their roles, responsibilities, and work for Friday, October 28th at nine AM via teleconference. Let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Second.
Stuart.
Honorable Stuart, thank you. Any comments or questions? That's one I just get off the October 28th, nine AM. I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Gay.
Chairman Calvert's green.
Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland? Honorable Freeland? Star six. Honorable Stuart?
Green, Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland? We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting, motion carries. Thank you. We're down to the last report, number eight. Report by NDOT, BIA, Apache County, Navajo County on roads that were washed out and how they're being mitigated. So their report will be shared by all counties, NDOT and BIA. Is Mr. Silversmith on the call?
Good evening, Honorable Chair Rick Nez, I am here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Silversmith. Um, BIA, are you on the call, Mr. Greg Mahoja? Your team? BIA?
Chairman?
Yes.
I text Sherwin Curly, let them know that BIA is up on the report.
BIA is on. Chairman?
Okay, BIA is on the call. So what about Apache County and Navajo County? None? I'll go to, um, BIA first. Um, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, this is Lorenzo Dugai. I'm the, um, BIA, um, Road Engineer out there at Navajo Region. Um, I help assist with the agency engineers and oversight of the maintenance. So the updates I have so far is, um, from Western Agency. Um, the, the maintenance, um, people are conducting several installation of several culverts at several locations in Gap and Cedar on Route sixty-one ten, sixty-one twenty, and in six-seven-three. Also in Denahoto Chapter on Routes sixty-four sixty, sixty-four sixty-one, and in one-eighteen. And also in the Shanto, Navajo Mountain and Inscription Chapters, we have routes sixty-three-ten, sixty-three-twenty-one, in two-two-one, and in sixty-three-twenty. So those all have washouts, erosion repairs, or culverts. And then the last one we have is the Loop and Bird Springs Chapter on Route sixty-eight-ten, sixty-eight-twenty, and in seventy-one. So some of these ones, um, they're repairing, but there's, um, others that are either the area roadway is muddy or it's just, um, standing, um, water that are pounding. So don't try to probably do either bypass if it's impassable or try to do a thorough to, um, get some of the water out in those areas that are, have standing water. And for defiance, they're working on N thirty on reinstalling three culverts that were, um, eroded from this previous, um, rainstorm. Um, they're also working on rebuilding the embankment, um, around the bridge and Delcon on N sixty. And washout repairs on N thirty-five, N ninety-three fifty-three, and ninety-six-five. So he's projecting that they might have all that done, um, either this Friday, but definitely next week. And they'll go ahead and start, um, back to, um, maintenance routine, the routine maintenance. Philly eighty, Philly Agency. Um, right now they're working out at eighty-sixty-six, which is in the, um, Black Mesa Chapter, um, due to the heavy rain again over the week, or last week. So they're just, um, creating detour roads and, um, repairing some of the, um, roads. On N four, they're removing stands from the roadway, clearing the roadway as well for the travel public and, um, cleaning cattle guards along the way. Eighty-sixty-five, um, they're repairing the washouts this week. And eighty-eighty-six, they're repairing, um, the washout, but they made it passable for, um, public to travel by. And there's several routes in that location, um, that end out of the, um, blading. So they're assisting in some of those areas. And within Shiprock Agency, um, mainly the Sanacy got, um, hit. So the, um, maintenance crew is working on fifty, forty-three, N thirty-four, N fifty-ninety-two, and N fifty-twelve. Um, all those were washed out and impassable, but, um, they finally got, um, to, to, to work on some detour routes, so bypass. So all those things are, um, passable right now with the bypass. But, um, they'll probably get that, um, oh, they're working on it this week. So we, they're kind of stretched out thin. So, um, the Farmington, um, maintenance crew is assisting, um, Shiprock this week. They're also installing a pipe on N thirty-four that was, um, eroded. And there's two locations that will be installed, um, once N thirty-four is done, which is on Route fifty, forty-three, and fifty-twelve. So once they complete N thirty-four, um, the pipe installation, then those, those other two. And then there's various routes, um, at various, um, locations that are being bladed by the, by the BIA, which is fifty-fifty-four, in three fifty-four, in thirty-four, in fifty-twelve, in fifty-fourty-nine, in three fifty-one, in fifty forty-three, and in fifty thirty-seven. They're hoping to have that, all those completed by, um, maybe half of it completed by this Friday. Then the other half should be completed by next week. So they're pretty much been out there, um, since the monsoon season hit. So they have pretty much a lot of it repaired. They returned back to the routine maintenance being conducted. But then that last rainstorm, we got it. It washed away a lot of the work in the road. So, um, they're back out there. So hopefully, um, we'll get everything done, um, within a week or two. And if some of the chapters, I know they've been calling for mowing, for signs, but if they can be patient and, uh, we get these roads back open, we'll, we'll be jumping on those, um, routine maintenance to be conducted. Um, that's all I have on my report for roads, BIA.
Thank you, Mr. Dugai. Um, before we go further, I'd like to have Mr. Greg Mahoja, the Regional Director for BIA, to go ahead and make a statement. Mr. Mahoja?
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the RDC, um, honorable delegates. My team is on board all the time to help. I'm, and respectfully, Mr. Dugai, who is boots on the ground, is doing this two plus hours after his duty, uh, hours. We need more lead time before we are required to attend these meetings so that we can be productive and provide substantive information on the ground and do our work. My team works hard. And I'm getting a little frustrated with these last minute requests. And respectfully, if we had more time, we could provide more substantive information. And, and, and Mr. Dugai, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Um, and thank you for providing that report. This is above and beyond your normal duty hours. And my team does that day after day after day. We need more time and more lead on when we're going to be involved in these meetings so that we can provide productive responses to requests from the RDC. It's challenging for us to be productive at the last minute. And I know some of these things are last minute. Outside of the RDC meetings, when roads wash out, our teams are out there before I even contact them. They know where the washouts are. They know where the challenges are. They already have plans in place. They're working on making sure people have access in and out of their communities. We cannot be expected to, to show up at the last minute in the future. And Chairman, I'd like to have a meeting with you to talk about that one-on-one. It's, it puts us in a difficult position to provide information that's productive to the communities when we don't have any lead time. And we're here right now. And we need to figure out how to do this better. And I'm willing to work cooperatively with the RDC, with the council delegates, with the chapters, because I know we're having challenges out there with these monsoons. But we need to figure out a better way to do this. I have other obligations, many of you all do too. I can't always be here without five minutes' notice. And I would appreciate if we could work through that and find a way to cooperatively accomplish some of the challenges we have out in the field. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoja, for your information, uh, sir. This morning, the agenda was read into the record. An amendment was made requesting that BIA, NDOT, Navajo County, as well as Apache County and other Roads Department from New Mexico, Arizona, and Utah provide a report at the end of RDC hours, new business afterwards. So our advisor contacted BIA and others. And I believe, um, that was sufficient time for everybody to be prepared this morning to provide a report by this evening. We're not making, we're not forcing anybody to give a report to RDC. We are leaders that represent our communities. We are asked by our constituents what the status is at the local communities that they are representing. We are very fortunate, some of us, who live off the Navajo Nation, where everything is accessible, our highways are built really good. And they're out there driving around. They don't have to worry about somebody being washed out. No, they don't. But our people are faced with this. And Mr. Mahoja, if you do not want your team to provide a report, you don't have to. You don't have to. But we appreciate everybody that does give a report and glad to give that report. So with that, we're not making anybody give a report, whether it's BIA, NDOT, anybody else. But our people are wanting to know where and what the status is with the roads at the local level. Thank you. We'll move down to Mr. Silversmith.
Good evening, once again, Honorable Chair Nez. I'd like to share my screen if I can, if I'm successful in doing this, sir. Uh, give me a second here. Do you see my screen? The contents of my screen?
Yes.
Mr. Tahie?
Great, okay. Um, from Mr. Tahie, I gather that you, you all can see my report here. So what I wanted to share with, uh, honorable delegates of the Resources and Development Committee is that we created this Excel spreadsheet back on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. And within this spreadsheet contains all our information regarding the monsoon season and how it has impacted the Navajo Nation specifically. From July twenty-seventh, that was the first initial amounts of rain that we received in our monsoon season. So, so, so this report, or this content of this Excel, Excel spreadsheet goes all the way back to, goes all the way back to July twenty, July twenty-seventh. And I've, I've, I've maneuvered myself to that point there. So continuing on here, this, this Excel spreadsheet is, is updated on a weekly basis. And a few times, a couple of times, I did share with, uh, uh, honorable delegates of the Resources and Development Committee. And we are not only addressing washout BIA and tribal routes, but we're also addressing private roads, uh, what we call residential roads, because those roads aren't part of the inventory within the BIA or tribal system. That's why we call them private roads. And also we've been repairing damaged areas in and around their homes. Sometimes we have substantial damages to people's front yards, backyard, and so forth. So we've been able to do that beyond, um, addressing our earth and dirt roads, gravel roads, and highways and bridges. So since July twenty-seventh, we've been working on weekends. Since July twenty-seventh, there has been nine weekends. And out of those nine weekends, we, we worked, the Navajo Division of Transportation worked approximately, approximately six of those weekends. And weekends meaning sometimes both on a Saturday and a Sunday. So it's been a consistent, uh, consistent form of response to the Navajo Nation. And I, I know Bureau of Indian Affairs has been working multiple weekends too, along with us. Uh, Mr. Mahoja and his team has been assisting, we've been assisting one another. We've also been getting assistance from our federal county and state partners to address these road damages. And, uh, we've been getting assistance, as you heard from Mr. Lorenzo Dugai, from all five agencies. Army Corps of Engineers has been, has provided their availability and assistance as well to the Navajo Nation. They were here last week just visiting the Navajo Nation and, uh, the amount of, uh, the amount of rain and monsoon that the nation has been experiencing. So we've been in, in contact with the Army Corps of Engineers in regards to the monsoon weather. Counties, many of our counties have been providing assistance. And, um, Apache County, Navajo County, Sandoval County, Samon County, Utah, uh, just to name a few. Coconino County, uh, have, have, have been providing that, that continuous assistance to the Navajo Nation. In this report, in this Excel spreadsheet, you see over four hundred and twenty, over four hundred and twenty instances where we have responded to the Navajo Nation's needs. And you, and you see that in our Excel, Excel spreadsheet, four hundred and twenty times that we've been out there. And we still have, we're still behind, we still haven't, um, gotten to over fifty other requests. It's probably closer to a hundred requests that we still haven't gotten, gone to. And there's, there's a lot of them still pending, a lot of chapters, delegates. Our, our tribal leadership, community leaders have been, um, consistently asking for updates and providing follow-ups on the requests. So we're just asking them to be continued, to continue patience and understanding as, as we address these washouts. But since, since July, just about eight weeks now, it's been about four hundred and twenty times. And as, as Mr. Dugai had, had shared with us earlier, sometimes when we repaired some of these washed-out dirt roads and so forth, um, the next day or the next weekend, same rain comes and, and damages those roads and so with the return and repair those same routes. So sometimes it's a repetitive, repetitive process on the same area, same road, and same, same damages that occurs. Uh, we have been repairing the roads and monsoon damages in each of our states, Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah. I know earlier this morning, Honorable Delegate Daniels had requested, um, status updates on Arizona, New Mexico. So in this Excel spreadsheet, you'll see our, our, our multiple times that we've addressed, uh, each of these damages in each of our three states. This current active monsoon weather season has, has deeply impacted our current overall progression of our active transportation improvement projects. Right now, we've have approximately twenty-seven projects in some form of, some form of progression. And some of those, we had to, we had to temporarily shut down because we had to mobilize those, uh, those staff that were doing soil stabilization, gravel chip sealing, uh, gravel laydown, chip sealing projects. We had to shut those projects down and shift them over to assist and help out with these monsoon repairs of, of our dirt roads and, and highways. So it's, it's had, it's had a big impact, not only on our dirt roads, but of our current, current construction projects and our regular road blading. There have been instances where we've had our heavy equipment get stuck in, 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 in well saturated areas, areas that have been heavily saturated with rain and so forth. On the surface, it may appear to be dry, but a foot down is when you feel, is when you see the, the amount of rain, the amount of saturation in the soil. For instance, there was one instance in Jedito, Arizona, where about three weeks ago, it took us two and a half days to, to free our motor grader and our bulldozer because it had stuck, got stuck in Jedito Wash, Route number ninety-one oh-two. And it took us two and a half days to get that out. And, um, how it got to that point was, you know, we had, we had community requests to, to make that, to make that wash passable. And so we, we got, we went in there knowing that the, you know, the, the top surface or the entire surface was, 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 was dry. However, when we got in there, it was, um, that wasn't the case. And that particular instance where we were trying to free the motor grader and the bulldozer, there's, we had attached to multiple chains. So one of those chains broke and it went directly back and hit the windshield of a motor grader. And it, it, we had a minor injury there. It, the, the result could have been much worse. We were so fortunate that our operator wasn't seriously hurt or life was taken. So these instances, um, our leadership, our chapter officials, our delegates, and now just everybody, that we have to let these wash crossings thoroughly dry or these dirt roads, or these muddy, muddy conditions on our dirt road, dirt road, or dirt roads thoroughly dry before we get out there. Because this is as a result, if, if we try to move in there too quickly. And we understand how it, it impacts the communities where we understand how, uh, these are bus routes and people need to get in and out. But we, we're just trying to keep everybody safe. Um, so going back to the report that you see here, it, it's just, um, I think of, um, well, well, in short, that's what I wanted to share. And this is what I wanted to share with you, this report here. And you'll see the multiple times, the four hundred and twenty times. I know I'm moving, I'm no, I know I'm moving swiftly here. But these are just the multiple times that we've, we've addressed many of the eastern, central, northern, western, and for defiance agencies. So, but, uh, I tried to make this, um, presentation and this update report as, as brief, as brief as possible on the delegate chair Nez and, um, delegate to the Resource and Development Committee. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Silversmith. I do, let all, I do, none of us, you, NDOT, by heh, it's, and God, it all could also be none, I just get all this. But let me go over to our, uh, Coconino County, uh, Ms. Fowler.
Yeah, this, NDOT, Chairman Nez, and I do, she, yeah, she, uh, Vice Chair Walker. And this is Yash, the Vice Chair Walker. Um she is Lena Fowler, Coconino County Supervisor. I'm gonna share my screen also. If I can figure it out. Coconino County, we maintain two hundred and um. Eighty-six miles of road and we have an agreement with Navajo Nation and BIA, all of these are BIA routes. And in Coconino County, um we work real closely with um the Navajo Nation Roads, uh. BIA and we have really a great relationship with both N N and um NDOT. And um ADOT also the highway, so I just wanna just appreciate them, they're really hardworking. All our operators uh know each other, we know each other by first names with the um each of the. Navajo Nation really appreciate them and BIA, we just met just um um. Uh the other day on Friday, we had a meeting with the BIA and Navajo Nation was too busy, they were addressing the. Um eastern Navajo flooding issues, so because of that, they were not at the meeting, but we did meet with BIA. Um Herb and Henry were there and we just updated each other on where we are. As far as the Navajo Nation, um and then we schedule another, we're we're scheduling another meeting. Where we're gonna all get back together again and do some coordinations and. Um update each other on our latest operators, new operators and where they are and. Just really um go into details about our roads and how we can. Uh coordinate and help each other and it's a great working relationship that we have um. And so, and then we also are gonna um have a, the next meeting, we're gonna be talking about um. School bus routes, we're gonna be um getting all the maps to the school bus routes. Uh and so that when the schools, um you know, in the wintertime, they leave about. Um five o'clock in the morning and they're on the road and a lot of times, you know, they just really um they don't. They usually call us if there's a situation, um even though I'm a county supervisor, people call me. They also, um so that's why we we're really ha- all hands on deck on the in the wintertime and I know that. That's how you all operate as well, that's how we you have to be as an elected official. So I wanna just share share our map here and I hope you can see that, can you see the map? That I'm showing?
Ms Fowler, yes, I can see the map.
Okay, thank you, so I wanna just um give you a real quick update on the um. Where we are, we have the northern, the northern roads, um just wanna just say that the nor. On the northern sections of the road and this what we're looking at right now, I I blew it up so that you could see it better. Um all of them, the the roads are really actually uh very muddy still. And just as um Mister Silver Smith just just mentioned, uh we're really cautious of. Our operators and our equipment, but they are maintaining them, we have um three operators that are. Out there on a daily basis, now if you all know of an operator looking for a job, we're looking for to hire another person. So um please get that word out, we're always looking for operators, so anyway, these are the roads we maintain. Kaibato, um N twenty-one, there's some uh just uh that's a a. A bus route, um page bus route, all of these are bus routes. And if you ever go on sixty-three thirty, it's a beautiful drive, you can see Navajo Mountain right up in this section. Um and N sixteen, there was an issue there, but we were, we all um were able to address that. One of the other thing that came up was like on N twenty, there were sand dunes that were the issues there, but. BIA, um this operators and staff from there, they were able to address that and up in the Navajo Mountain area. Um so these are the routes, there's, they're all passable and they're actually um. Our operators are just trying to um catch up, just it's it's a lot for them, just uh as you've been hearing. Just to catch up with them, there were some sand dunes on uh two fifteen and two thirteen and I drove that and um. And we, they're they're pretty good now, you know, with the rain coming in and stuff, so. Those, and then we have down south, so we have uh thirteen Navajo Communities Chapters in our. In Coconino County, um we have, you see Mon Hopi right there next to Tubus City, but we don't have, maintain any roads on Hopi. But um we're going down to um Cameron, Loop, Tonani Lake and Burt Springs area. Um that's where we we maintain the roads there, now you've been hearing about the Highway eighty-nine shutdown because of the. Um flooding in the Flagstaff area, there's been quite a bit of flooding. Um Highway eighty-nine's been closed about maybe about ten times this year. And just because of the flooding, there were three, three uh fires that went through through. Um actually Sho- Schultz Tunnel Pipeline, um they have gone through and just on the west side. And as a result of that, there's flood, been flooding and that flooding has, every time it rains, it some um. You know, it shuts down the, it goes over the highway, um and that's the reason why that that Highway um eighty-nine gets shut down. So what happens is people start driving from Cameron, this sixty-three, sixty-seven thirty and trying to get to Flagstaff. Trying to get to work, so we've been trying to, we're working with ADOT, ADOT has hired a crew. And they're trying to um address that, we have um. Our county, um we are the ones, it's all in unincorporated communities of Timberline, um Fernwood. And Donnie Park area, so we are um doing mitigation work in that area so that. That the highway doesn't keep getting shut down, we're working with the Federal Highway Administration and. And ADOT and the um so that's how we're trying to address that. Um the issue right now, well, you can see all the other roads down here, um. Council Delegate Walker and his staff, they're. They're just awesome people to work with, so. This is all the roads that we maintained up in here, the issue right now is the N sixty-seven twenty. That is from Coal Mine and the road goes and you see this light. Light right here, it's a square, that's Hopi right there, so sixty-seven twenty, it goes into Hopi and back into Navajo. And it goes to Tonani Lake, so right there, um there, it's um. It needs major um work and we met, when we met with uh BIA staff, we informed them and well. Again, because they're already working on it together, but we are going to have a contractor. Uh Coconino County's hiring a contractor to address the issues on that road right there. The only other thing I would mention is that um Hopi's been contacting our Department Public Works and. Um saying that maybe we want to reroute this road off of Navajo, but that's uh in you all's hands. And we're going to continue doing the maintenance, um daily maintenance that we do, we perform out there. So that would be my update, if there's anything else, here's Flagstaff and here's the highway shutdown. If you ever have any questions on um any roads, uh please don't hesitate to contact me. Or our Public Works Department, we have a new director there, um and we also have um. Um really great staff and like I said, that we need uh we need operators, so if you know anyone that can. That wanna apply, we're, we're a great organization to work for, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms Fowler, appreciate the work that you do out there at Coconino County. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion in a second and then we can go ahead and ask questions.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, second by. Honorable Stewart, thank you very much. Honorable members of RDC, we did receive a report. Update reports on the road conditions, roads that are being mitigated. From BIA, NDOT, Coconino County. Do you have any questions or comments?
This is Chair, this is Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, go ahead.
Um. Yeah, I'm good, uh Mr. Chair, I'm the Vice Chair. Chama, I'm good, I'm good, Coconino County Board of Supervisor, I'm good. Division Director, I'm good. Uh Division of Transportation, I'm good, I'm good. I don't know, I'm good. Uh Mr. Chair, um maybe what we can do is um. That that another day, I'm good, I'm good. I see, I'm good, I'm on on the roads, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I see, I'm good, I'm good. I see, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. I'm good, BIA, Mister Mahoja. I don't know, and his crew, I'm good, uh BIA, I don't know, I'm good, all that, the counties. I'm good with Utah, I got San Juan County. I don't know, I'm good, I'm good with Arizona, Navajo County. I don't Apache County, I don't know, Coconino County, I don't, I'm good, New Mexico, San Juan. McKinley County, I don't know. I'm good, I'm good, in New Mexico. I'm good, I'm good. I see, I see, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I see, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. Really hear from Apache County. I'm good, I'm not, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good, when we have our agency council meeting, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good, Coconino County, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. Coconino County, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. In in Old Jito, Old Jito goes into three counties. Um. San Juan County, Utah, I don't know, Apache County, Navajo County, I'm good. Um the service area, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. Um Apache County. I'm good, I'm good. Uh I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good, Apache County. I'm good, I'm good. 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 Mr. Chair, I don't know, I'm good. Um. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, starting from um Navajo Mountain, I'm good. The Utah Chapters. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good, San Juan County. Roads, I'm good, I'm good. Resolution, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good, the local chapters. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I don't know, I'm good, I'm good, Mister Silver Smith, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. Um, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. Years, years back. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. Uh two, two days, three days, I'm good. I'm good, 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 I'm good. But I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. Some of the roads like that, bus routes, I'm good. I'm good, 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 I'm good. We have residential roads. We have county roads, BIA roads and NDOT roads. I'm good, I'm good. So I, I've been, I'm good, I'm good. I'm good, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Daniels, I'm good. Your request to have a. More time to discuss the issues of washed out roads on the Navajo Nation. From different departments. BIA, NDOT, Coconino County and perhaps Navajo and Apache County and also some from Eastern. And New Mexico Counties. I'm good, I'm good. That that would be good to hear from everybody, I don't, this is what we do. This is what we do as leaders, we we stay up late, we have to do these. We're called out to our communities and tend to our people as well. And that's why they expect us to give them a report because the meetings are are coming, planning meetings and chapter meetings are coming up here. The beginning of October and we can just give them whatever, whatever information that we received today and pass along. But what we'll do, uh Honorable Daniels, is add it to the next agenda. Your request to have a a a day's meeting, perhaps a leadership meeting and for us to. Just ask questions and work, still work together moving forward. I don't know, we're saying it, we're saying this, we're speaking out on behalf of our people, especially in remote areas. Where people get stranded and there's no way to try and clean the roads out to their areas and the snow is coming. And we need to look, look out for our grandmas and grandpas out there. We love our people and that's why we do what we do, so. Mister Tahi, if you would add that to the agenda for next Wednesday, we can have a leadership meeting, Mister Tahi.
Chair members of RDC, I will add that to agenda. I just wanna let you guys, let RDC members know that the first available date for this leadership meeting. Will be on a Friday, October seventh, that is the final opening date for the month of October. After that, RDC will start scheduling its meetings in November. Chair members of RDC, back to you.
Thank you, Mister Tahi, honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions?
Chairman, Thomas Walker.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, you have the floor.
Yes, uh Chairman, all committee members. Hello, the uh listening audience and meeting participants. Although the presenters for the uh various reports from the different governments and agencies. Really appreciate the information. Although um they, I wanna thank um Coconino County Supervisor, Chama. Mister Lena Fowler for um. Giving us information or updates. On the uh continuing work that the county does in partnership with BIA, the NDOT. The southwest part of the um great Navajo Nation. Southwest Pocket, that's the area, the region that I represent. The communities of Burt Springs, Loop, Toonani Lake, Cameron and Coal Mine Chapters. Roads have been on our minds a lot, roads have been in our discussions, conversations. The community grapevine news and so forth. Uh because when roads wash out, people start asking around. Start asking their neighbors, asking um just just. Asking, asking around, yeah, I go. I guess uh in a way, he.